Save it for a moment.
Call to order, the February 4th, 2020, meeting of the North Andover Planning Board. First on the agenda, A and R 43 Linden Avenue ZenCo LLC applicant requests endorsement of approval not required plan dividing lot into two. Hi.
Hi folks. This, uh, this application is to split this existing lot. It's a, it's an oversized lot, the two lots would be undersized, the, the plan's been noted to not have, um, you know, a buildability until and unless zoning variance or variances are issued at some time in the future and endorsed on the same plan. Oh, I'm so sorry, Tom Zarico, 1665 Great Pond Road. In any event, procedurally, I, I originally was submitting this to zoning first because the subdivision regulations seem to suggest in the A and R section that we shouldn't be here until any variances are secured. It seems to say that, but I was directed otherwise to come here first, hoping that that's consistent with this board's view. We know that we have to appear in front of both.
Square footage total is, what, fifteen thousand?
Is fifteen thousand.
Alright, so then you're making two lots that don't have the square footage, which that's not an issue for us, but do they both have frontage, enough frontage?
They, they would have undersized or, or limited frontage.
So, A and R if it doesn't have enough frontage, I mean, we can give an A and R when they're not buildable lots and mark them such and then you can get a variance, but if they don't have enough frontage, I don't know that we can. So, it's on a public way, so access isn't an issue, but each of these lots wouldn't have enough frontage on that public way, so I'm not sure that we can do an A and R.
Well, that's, again, that's why. My understanding by reading the regs was to go to zoning first, and I was directed otherwise, so, by staff.
So basically, what you would be doing, you went to zoning first, is they would be granting variances on lots that don't exist and, that don't exactly z- exist. And so what we had him do was marked the lots as not, as being not considered buildable lots, even though they both have buildings on them right now. However, so if you did endorse this plan, you would be endorsing it as plans that were not buildable and you would have to make that decision if it, if it actually met the three requirements. So again, the three requirements are, plants must front on a public way, must meet minimum frontage requirements, which now he has this note on, on the plan, which says they're not buildable and that they have vital access and there's no wetlands or anything present, preventing access. So the only question is with number two, is if he find not sufficient enough to endorse this as a, as an A and R.
If they're not buildable, does that negate the need for enough frontage?
He would still have to go back then to the zoning board of appeals and he would have to request that they grant a variance on that frontage as well as the, the lot area.
In years past, not that that's necessarily a guide, I realize, but in years past, we would have done this by going to zoning first, so that these questions would be, would be answered with a decision that supported the plan that's in front of you.
So, I, I understand where staff and where you're coming from is because we don't want to grant a variance on a plot, on a lot that doesn't exist, but at the same time, it's hard to grant an A and R for something that doesn't meet the bylaws, so it's, it's tricky, so hold on, I'm just reading some case law.
I think if a basketball is done as you're reading, if I could.
Uh, just, um, uh, mention, I think that the decisions by one board were always conditioned upon the other board's, you know, supporting, and, and related supporting decision.
Again, there's no requirement that one board honor the other board's decision, so, um, if you, I don't know if you're looking through like the A and R handbook, I know I provided the applicant with several examples in which, just kind, to, just to give him warning that he may have some challenges on, in front of the ZBA if you do decide to, to endorse, there's, you know, the A and R handbook does have several examples of, of cases where the ZBA didn't grant the variance, but that would be, yeah, to his own, you know, that would be his, you know, if you do endorse, it would be then up to him to deal with if they, if the ZBA decides to still not grant the variance, then he has now two non-conforming lots.
In a way, fireification, I mean, obviously.
It's the recording of, of the plan that creates, that creates the, the lots, I mean, pursuant to the decision and the, and the signature. Procedurally, as an applicant, I wouldn't record the plan until decisions by any applicable board were, were, were made and, and supporting it. We wouldn't want to record a plan that, that jeopardizes the legitimacy of the existing lot.
And the way I'm reading the case law is that we can approve a plan that has zoning deficiencies if it's so noted and these wouldn't be considered lots because it's taking one parcel dividing one two, neither is buildable, so technically, they're not lots at all until you, until you get approval from the ZBA, you can't do anything with them. So, I think based on that, I think we can approve it, so.
And, you know, our action is to endorse the planning department to sign. Could we maybe condition that so that when, at such time that?
You have to do it within 21 days.
Oh, 21 days?
Yeah, and I don't, and I don't think, I don't think we can really condition an A and R, I mean, it's just that, that, we're saying it's not a subdivision, so this isn't a subdivision, doesn't mean it's buildable, it's just not a subdivision.
Either, either you endorse or you don't, and then you have the three requirements that you have to meet, so.
I just read the case law again, I'm pretty comfortable that we can do this.
Are you okay with the way the note is written? I always, I used to always go to Paul Hedstrom when he was on the board and he would parse that language very finely.
Yeah, you have the note on top that says lot A and B are not considered building lots under the current town and North Andover zoning bylaw, and then it has a ver here underneath the signature block, the standard language that says it's not a endorsement of the, basically, the zoning.
So I think those, I think it's good that it has both of those, I don't think either one alone would be sufficient, but I think both of them together are. Okay, create a motion to approve the A and R for 43 Linden Avenue?
Right, the plan was filed in A and R.
Yes, yes.
So moved.
Yeah, thank you, or assistant planner. Moved. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Alright. Alright, no more academic discussions. Master discussion, Master Plan Implementation Committee. Okay, so we talked about this last time, I did get some correspondence from, um, from the town that the Board of Selectmen are actually interviewing, have done some interviews and are also doing further interviews of candidates that people have applied, and they would like one of our members to come to those interviews, which I think is a good idea. So, if someone is available and would like to do it, they're doing it Monday, sorry, I think it's the 10th, but hold on for me to double check. I think it's the 10th and the 24th.
Do you need me to go through the dates?
February, Monday, February 10th and Monday, February 24th, from 5:40 to 6:40. I am not available, I didn't know if anyone else might be available and willing to sit in and then report back.
Five forty?
Yeah.
Six forty on the 10th and the 24th?
Same person have to do both, probably, right?
It would be preferable, I mean, if we can only get one person to one, that, that's okay, we, I mean, we don't, it doesn't have to be, but it would probably be preferable.
Can't make those terms.
Nope.
I.
I love to.
No? Kelly, maybe?
I, yes, I'm, yes, I can.
Okay, we'll, we'll put you in and if something changes, let me know.
Alright.
Alright, so, I will.
What is it, I forgot my pen, what is it, the 10th and the 24th?
Yes. Fantastic, thank you. Okay, great, trustees of the reservation prescribed burning at Wire Hill. Hello.
Hi, how's it going?
Alright.
So, my name is Jeff DeNancor, I'm a coastal ecologist with the trustees reservations and I'm here tonight to seek approval for a habitat restoration project at Wire Hill here in North Andover. And some of the proposed restoration work falls within the buffer zone with, within the watershed protection district surrounding Lake Kuchichuik. And we are requesting a waiver of a special permit to conduct this work. So in 2019, the trustees were awarded a habitat management grant from the Massachusetts Division of Fish and Wildlife to conduct approximately 31.5 acres of forest management to improve the existing barrens and savanna habitat at Wire Hill. And this management is really part of the trustees' long-term goals to restore and maintain up to 80 acres of this barrens habitat and associated species of the property while, while also reducing threat from wildfire. And so the trustees have submitted a notice of intent with the North Andover Conservation Commission for work within the wetland buffer zones and additionally a forest cutting plan with the Department of Conservation and Recreation in their service, service forestry bureau. And so I had a bit of a longer presentation prepared, roughly 15 minutes, but I'll try to summarize that and just kind of really, really touch on the details, but for, for background sake, so, I don't know, if you go to the previous slide. Wire Hill is 194 acre reservation owned by the trustees and it has a long history of human influence dating back to Native Americans and then during colonial periods when the land was cleared and used for grazing purposes. So this human influence coupled with a, a long history of wildfire, poor soil conditions, and then ongoing habitat restoration that the trustees have conducted over the years has resulted in Wire Hill containing one of Essex County's probably most significant fire-influenced barrens habitat communities. And so today, the habitat at Wire Hill supports several rare and uncommon species, including species of greatest conservation concern identified in the state's wildlife action plan that are just really dependent upon this early successional barrens, barrens habitat. And so one of the focus species for us at this site is the frost and elephant butterfly, which is a state-listed species, and it is also a candidate for federal listing underneath the Endangered Species Act and it's considered globally rare. And so, the frost and elephant relies on this barrens habitat and specifically an, an associated plant called, it's Baptisia tinctoria or wild indigo, which is the host plant for the butterfly's larvae. And so through the land use history, our conservation efforts, this has just resulted in great habitat for, um, for this butterfly and it essentially serves as, as an indicator for us on the habitat quality at the site and its presence indicates the significance of this habitat at Wire Hill, so you can go to the next slide.
Just to cut to the chase, I think the history is good.
Yeah.
You, you've done burns in the past, correct? You've done burns, controlled burns in the past at a number of times, and you've never had any problems?
Never had any problem.
Is this as proportional to what's been done in the past?
No, it's, it's, it's really similar to what has been done in the sense, so essentially, we conducted canopy thinning and heavy mowing starting in 2006, again in 2015, initiated prescribed fires since, since 2008. And so, this additional restoration work is to really improve upon the habitat conditions that we've created. It's really kind of tweaking those existing conditions.
But it's not as, I guess, my point is it's comparable or even less so than what you've done in the past.
Essentially.
Yeah.
And so this would just be kind of additive to what we've, what we've been doing. And then, you know, a big portion of it is that we get these large restoration projects, we get monies for this to expand and improve upon, upon the habitat, and then we have to maintain that habitat to prevent the, the early successional habitat from succeeding into forest, which, which inhibits the, the habitat for the species that we're looking for.
Yeah, the, the reason that, and we, both I and our conservation agent actually met with Jeff probably about a month ago and we asked him to come before the board was simply because some of the burn was a little closer to the, the edge of the water, so we just wanted to make sure that the board was made aware and had a chance to ask any questions about, about the activity.
So this is the history. Where are you going to, where are the proposed activities?
Yeah, so, um, if you go to the following slides and sort of these, the, the next picture is just, you know, this was the habitat restoration in 2006, these are the conditions now, again, same thing, 2015 and where they are today. And then the following slide after this one. And so this is what is being funded through the habitat manage, oh, previous slide. So this is the work that's being funded through this habitat management grant, so it's essentially the area in red is where we'd be conducting canopy thinning, you know, we're estimating about 90 trees being removed in the process to get the canopy down to about a 20% cover. And then additionally, heavy mowing would be brought through the areas that's slashed in, in yellow and this is to really ma- manage the, the understory vegetation, that's essentially maturing and promoting the same shade impacts that inhibit the species where we're trying to manage for. And then if you go to the, the next slide, just kind of outlining where, you know, following the restoration work through this grant, where we would conduct some of the routine management activities moving forward to maintain the habitat. And then the, the next slide, so this depicts work that would occur within the wetland buffer, which is part of the notice of intent with the Conservation Commission, and then the next slide. And so this indicates the work that would occur within, within the watershed protection district.
So, going back to the proposed work, it, it didn't look, didn't look like there was burning happening, it was cutting, it was kick, like topping off trees and heavy mowing.
Yeah, and then, so then the, the burning, to kind of simplify things, is, is kind of part of that suite of routine management activities that we'd be conduct, conducting. And so prior, you know, we have come in front of the planning board to approve burns that have come closer, closer to the watershed buffers. And so, I'm here today as, to kind of discuss this sort of suite of routine management activities that we would be conducting on an ongoing basis and to just kind of bring that through you to kind, kind of get the, the overall approval for these activities. Obviously, if we were to conduct these activities, we would be more than happy to kind of update the planning board regularly and, and kind of notify the planning board when any of these activities were to occur.
Is this supposed to require?
This, I think, well, he's moved, they're going to be removing approximately 90 trees and so that would probably be some, some land disturbance involved in that, so, um, but.
Would we be asked to, that, there's a mention of a waiver of a watershed special permit?
Yeah.
Is there going to be a land disturbance permit? I'm not sure that I want to just grant blanket.
Well, there would be a land disturbance permit or a watershed special permit.
Yeah, this seem, to me, it just seems like closer to the, somewhere between, so it was closer to.
They would be doing things that might not be, sort of, that you couldn't do without the permit. You know, some of the stuff we normally do with homeowners where we don't want to cut and so forth, they're going to do that here. But this is, obviously, the circumstances are different.
Right, they're not just cutting, you know, four trees down, this is a number of trees.
Right, but it's within the watershed, it's, there's a request for, I mean, it's good coming here to talk about it, but there's a request for a waiver of a watershed special permit, right?
Yes.
Okay. It seems like a lot of work, a lot of times people come and request a waiver when you don't want to pay for a lot of work and it's a minimal job. It seems more than minimal and done all the work, I guess, why, why, why do a waiver? If there's going to be an, an NOI anyway and all this work's been already done.
Yes.
Why not actually get the permit? That's my question, why do we need a waiver and why, why not actually apply for the permit, get the permit, do it for a set period of time? I guess I'm just wondering why we need a waiver.
Well, this isn't just going to be for a set, this is going, the, the idea is that this would be just ongoing maintenance.
For how long?
Basically.
Um, in, in, into the perpetual end of the future, so the, the, the canopy thinning that we're being conducted under this is just kind of like a one-shot deal, but the, if we don't conduct the, the heavy mowing, prescribed fire and sort of that routine management approach, then we essentially lose the value of this habitat. And in addition, the, the fuel loads grow up, so the effort that we've been working with the, the, the fire department on in the past, I mean, we kind of lose that value and we increase the fuel loads and if a wildfire were to run through the site, it would increase its severity, so.
It all sounds like a really good idea.
Yeah.
I mean, looks like you have approval from the state and the Department of Fisheries and Wildlife, approval from the fire department. It seems like a really good idea to do this, I think it's well planned out. I guess I, I, just a little bit uncomfortable saying, okay, go and do this forever, come back when you feel like it. It seems to me it would be better to do it as a permit and say, do it for the next three years and then when that comes out, come back for another permit. I, I guess I'm just, and maybe I'm oversensitive to it, but I guess I'm, it seems odd to me to just say, okay, go ahead and go about your business and then not check back in with us and not have a permit to do it, I don't know.
Yeah. Do you anticipate any soil erosion as a result of your activities?
Um, no, so all restoration work that we've conducted in the past hasn't resulted in any, in any erosion on the site and then we'd be conducting the work when the ground was either frozen or driest. I mean, all work has to be conducted before June 30th with the grant. And, um, so that would minimize, and soil disturbance and the, the machine, cutting machinery that we'd be using is all, is all low ground pressure track machinery, so.
Do you want to get this done before June 30th, essentially, this, this first?
The, the, the grant component, so the, the, the canopy thinning component of this and the, the heavy mowing that the, that the contractor that we're using is going to be doing. It's just because a lot of the area, the, the size of the diameter has kind of gone beyond the size of our equipment, so we need to kind of do that initial, initial mowing in some of these areas that haven't received routine mowing to just kind of get that diameter size down, so then we could later go through with our own equipment.
Do they have a schedule for when they would propose to do this work?
Um, so hopefully, as soon as we get, if, it gets approved through the planning board, the, then the notice of intent and the forest cutting plan, once all that gets approved, I'm envisioning, hopefully, you know, say later in February. And so once we get that green light, we would conduct the work.
When are you going in before Hong Kong?
Uh, tomorrow.
Okay.
I mean, I, would, would what I've submitted suffice for a, a special permit?
Application, I'm not, I'm not sure.
The difference was, in, in fact, he has a pretty hefty application submission, so with the special permit, that would probably go through our peer review consultant. To be, I don't, and I'm sorry, I don't have this information, but I'm not quite sure if Conservation has submitted through the, the peer review consultant, I don't, I don't think they have. But this is pretty much, he, he has a hefty application, so if you decide that you want to go that route, then at least, it seems like he has the documentation that would be necessary.
I guess we, we can vote on it, we can vote on either granting a waiver or having it go through the normal, the, the process.
Were required a permit in the past? No, I don't, I have not seen any record of, of permitting in, in the past, which is.
Similar work's been done in the past?
We definitely, no, I mean, we never have done in the past, I think for the reason, the work is similar, I think the scale of it's.
Was it in the watershed though?
No, it's all in the watershed, I, I, I think the feeling was that. No, it's all in the watershed. I, I, I think the feeling was that, what would be the incremental value of a further review in terms of protecting the lake more than, uh, the, the trustees would? I mean, it's, you know, this is a circumstance where the interests are aligned. And I think we sort of felt that, based on what they showed, it was sufficient. So.
And, and it sounds like, and tell me if I'm reading this wrong, is if the, one of the concerns is that they'll be, would do this into, you know, per, in perpetuity without checking in with you. I mean, you-
Well, if we're granting a waiver of a watershed special permit, how long is that for and for what work? I mean, it's for this work, I guess if it's outside of this work, then they wouldn't have a permit for it. But I don't know, it seems, it seems, for a board that makes people jump through some hoops rightfully so, wrongly so, sometimes to get, you know, decks and pools, and we're really, really sensitive about the watershed, even if we're doing it for someone I think is a great organization and that does a great job, it seems pretty relaxed to waive a special permit for this type of work.
Still, Peter's not here because he's obviously-
Well, we can waive it.
I mean, Peter's the harbor master, so.
So why don't we, why don't we do this? Let's, let's hold off. He's gonna be here in about fifteen minutes. So I would like his input, because that, that could at least weigh me one way or the other. So why don't we second call? It's, we'll come back to it, get our harbor master watershed expert here and see what he thinks. Okay?
Certainly.
All right, great. Uh, three fifteen Turnpike Street, Merrimack College, request for site plan review waiver under section one ninety-five eight point one-one C to allow for renovation of the existing twenty-eight thousand six hundred forty, forty-eight square foot collegiate church of Christ the Teacher and attached maintenance garage. The project will include a two thousand two hundred eighty-eight square foot addition.
Good evening.
Hi.
How you doing? My name is Felipe Schwartz. I'm Associate Vice President of Campus Planning Facilities at Merrimack College. Um, what we have before you is a request for a waiver of site plan review for a renovation project that we're doing. And this is a long time project, um, in, in the works. Uh, the collegiate church was built in nineteen fifty-six, has had a, a history of various religious purposes. And there's a basement that has an auditorium type stage and space and a maintenance garage next to that. So we're looking to transform the space. And one of the key components of transforming the space is providing handicap accessibility. The current building does not have an elevator. Um, and anytime we have a major event, we have to bring in a temporary lift. And so that's, that's one main component you see on the plan, shaded and dark. The other shaded dark area is on the backside of the garage footprint, where we'd like to expand a food service venue for campus. This is a small cafe type setting. Um, and it would feed in, it would all, it would all work integral to the whole building. So the threshold for site plan review, as you know, is two thousand square feet. When we do our additions and our subtraction for part of the building that we're removing, we're, we end up at two hundred and eighty-eight square feet above the threshold. That's basically it. The addition has no impact on all the criteria that you have listed. We have very minimal impact on water and sewer, all of which we've had discussions with DPW. We had a, a nice TRC meeting with staff. And that's about it.
Lounge space?
Yep.
With pool tables, large screen TVs, six lanes of bowling, esports, gaming, and golf simulators.
Yes. An active fun space.
Kids are working hard over there, huh?
It is, it is trying to-
I think we might need a-
Trying to keep students busy.
We might need a site visit once it's, um-
You're more than welcome for a site visit once we're done. But it's fabulous open space that we're looking to get in the ground immediately so we can achieve it by the fall. In our academic calendar, fall opening and things that open in the fall are really what we're, what we're targeting.
And to clarify, the, the, for lack of a better term, the lower portion of the, the expansion.
Yep.
That's, that's all ADA upgrades?
That's elevator and entry.
Elevator and entry. And then the, the backside, that's the-
Back of the house food.
Is, is, so that's a, is that a food prep area?
Yep, kitchen, back of the house kitchen area.
Okay. Um, any other modifications to the site plan in general?
Other than walkways, the walkway that comes from that elevator stair tower to the campus going down, we're just regrading that to make that accessible.
Any changes to lighting?
Other than at the building entry, we'll probably add a light along that, along that particular sidewalk. But-
No new parking, correct?
Nope.
So there's no, you have to change the traffic pattern at all to provide?
None. None. This is all basically existing space.
I'm wondering why nobody wants to spend time with us. This is a waiver. The last one was a waiver.
Um, this, I, I don't have any other question. Any question? Makes sense to me. I mean, barely above the two thousand. Doesn't seem to be anything that would really have any effect outside this local, localized building. So.
Can Mr. Peter think?
We held one for you. Um-
Sorry, I'm late.
That's okay. Uh, could we get a motion to approve the waiver of site plan review, six thirty-three Turnpike Street?
I'll make the motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Hi.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Um, okay. Do you want to go back to, you ready to jump in? Okay. Why don't we go back to trustees of the reservation? Okay. So, uh, we were having a discussion. The trustees are, uh, can we go back to what the proposal is? They have requested a waiver of a watershed special permit. They are looking to do prescribed burning, canopy thinning, heavy mowing, and ongoing maintenance and restoration in the areas here, and are asking for a waiver of the watershed special permit. Uh, it's been mentioned that similar type requests have been made in the past. They're coming here because it is a little closer to the watershed. Uh, I raised concerns about why are, why not just go, their, their application is very thorough. Why not actually have a watershed special permit, um, rather than something that's indefinite? Um, it seems like a lot of the other members of the board are more, um, comfortable, given the history of the similar activities, um, the history with the trustees and things like that. Um, so as our pseudo watershed expert harbor master, wanted to get your opinion on whether you think a watershed special permit would be warranted, required, or whether you need to have comfort waiving it.
I would like to say he's a watershed advocate.
Advocate, also, as well.
I'd like to say I'm a very balanced watershed person.
Just, uh, I'm feeling with you. They-
Yeah.
They're going to appear before conservation tomorrow because they filed for an NOI.
I am, uh, I, I have a lot of comfort with what the trustees are doing. I'm familiar with the last time they did this. And, um, I have reviewed their, uh, uh, master plan document for the property, uh, which I think was extremely well-written and covers this type of activity. My question is, who is the trustees gonna have do the work? And what is their experience in doing this in general and at this site?
We're the, uh, working with TR Land Works. Um, and so they are a licensed forester in the state of Massachusetts. They have not done work at this specific site, but they have been doing, uh, similar work for us for other, uh, habitat restoration that is very similar. So really great at the, um, at the heavy mowing component, canopy thinning. And, um, we've just been really pleased with, with the result of, um, of, of the work that they've done.
So finally, the other question is, unit four, um, uh, is on a slope leading down to the lake. And what sort of erosion mitigations are available in the event after the burn and heavy cutting, they get a big rainfall event?
Uh, we weren't planning to implement any, any like silt fencing or any-
You were or were not?
We, we were not planning on that. Um, you know, uh, uh, essentially, the cutting where, where, all the cutting is planned to occur during this growing season. And, um, and the following, uh, vegetation growth, I think would, um, would really prevent that soil erosion. And then just through the equipment that we are, we are using in the history of the site, the restoration work that we have done, hasn't resulted in any impacts and on slopes that are greater than the slopes that, that are on that side of it.
That's part of what I'm saying. I agree that with the work they've done before, it hasn't been any impact. There is that one section of unit four that appears to be very close to the shoreline, and that's kind of what drew my attention.
Yeah, and that, that, that side is really close. And so, um, that side falls within the twenty-five foot, um, buffer zone for the, um, under the, the Wetland Protection Act and town bylaws. Um, and so we are not gonna be doing any mowing within that twenty-five foot buffer zone, but we are gonna be bringing prescribed fire through that area, just because that existing trail that runs along the lake edge functions as a fire break for the burn units in, in, in that area. So it would just be really challenging, uh, for us in the future for, for prescribed fire. But we are gonna, I'll flag out the, um, the twenty-five foot notice of zone for the, the forestry contractor in that area.
So I think the answer is that I'm pretty comfortable based on the plan they have, the work they've done before. But what's the rest of the board feel?
I, that seems to be the consensus. I, I'm, I don't like the idea of giving anyone an indefinite waiver, um, especially when they have such a thorough presentation of why not actually put it into a permit. But, um, if we are gonna do it, I would suggest making, keep putting a time period at least on the waiver, three years, four years, something like that, at least. So at some point, they need to come back and, um, you know, come back.
I mean, personally, I think that makes a lot of sense. I mean, I think it would be good to update you guys just on the, on the work that we, that we are doing. You know, we already have to notify the, uh, the fire department, conservation commission, DEP for the prescribed burns that we're doing. So, I mean, I think that makes perfect sense for us to come back and, you know, a timeline that you feel appropriate to just give you an update on, on the work that we have been doing.
What I could add to the waiver is- There's a condition that says that any time a prescribed burn or any type of maintenance is to occur, the planning board is part of that notification. And then, I don't know if you want him to come back in person every so often just to check in.
Just, I would just say the waiver has been- For three years and whatever, if that's the time period for you, whatever time period people want. And then if they need another waiver, they can come back and get another waiver.
Why can't we just go with two years?
Would whatever, whatever.
Two years?
Whatever people, I mean, someone wanted to make-
John, did you have some thought on this?
No, I sort of, pretty much, uh, in a far less elegant way, sort of similar to, to your thoughts. But I think you explained the nuance as much better.
Two, two. Okay. So can we get a-
But also notifications.
All right. So can I get a motion to approve the request for a waiver of a watershed special permit, such waiver to last for two years, condition of said waiver that, um, anytime there's prescribed burning or other notifications that the planning board be notified as well as Abutts?
Can you remind that with waivers, typically, um, the planning staff needs to go out. With this, there's going to, they're going to be flagging the wetland area. Um, so, um, prior to us going out, we'll have them ensure that the wetland markers are out. Um, we can go out and spec, take photos, document what we see.
Okay. So that's gonna be the motion. Just, I'm still gonna vote against it, because I do think you should go for the whole special permit. But I think this is a good.
So moved.
Moved?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Me. Okay. Waiver granted. Okay, great. All right. Uh, six thirty-three Turnpike Street, new public hearing, application for special permit, site plan review under section one ninety-five eight point one-one, site plan review, and one ninety-five ten point seven, the North End Arizona Bylaw. Applicant proposes the construction of a twelve-foot paved drive wrapping around the existing building for parking stalls and stormwater improvements. Project is located within the corridor development district one, CDD one zoning district. Hello?
How you doing?
Good, thank you.
I'm Ashonda from Ashonda and Associates. And, um, as you said, this is for six thirty-three Turnpike Street. And I actually sent these to Monica this morning, but since I sent this plan over to her, um, I did get comments from the peer review and from your department as well. So I actually did update a plan and I brought it with me tonight, but it's not gonna be up there. Um, I did make some of the revisions that you guys did request. I know I'm gonna have to do, uh, a formal filing, but I, I did obviously read through all the comments and I did start making those revisions.
Well, why don't we start with what we have currently?
Sure.
Because that's gonna need to be reviewed as well. So why don't we just go with what we got? So tell us about this, um, where we are, what, what this building-
Okay, so this is, um, uh, six thirty-three Turnpike Street. It's, um, an existing ranch. And, uh, my client, Michael Riley, he runs a small, um, pest control business, so Anover Pest Control. And he bought it, um, you know, obviously to try to make improvements, to make it more suitable to run a business out of. So, sure.
For this one, no. You actually had a waiver request down the street for a chimney sweep.
Pest control?
No.
Okay.
No, we had a, we, the, um, staff had a, a TRC probably about, mm, almost a year ago. But I think this is the, as far as I know, this is the, the first of, of this.
Okay, no problem. So, um, basically what we're proposing is leaving the existing curb cut as-is. We didn't want to propose any work in the right-of-way. And then, um, have, you know, a twelve-foot wide drive come around the building behind the back, and then have four, uh, angled parking stalls. Um, as you can see, as he loops around the back, it'd be one-way, uh, flow direction. Have four parking stalls for company vehicles. And then they would come back out and pull back on to one fourteen there. So it'd be one-way cir, uh, circulation of, uh, traffic there.
So where is it? Can you turn, where are the existing curb cuts on?
Sure. It's right out there, yep. I, I did dimension it. It's, the existing curb cut is thirty-one feet. Um, I'm aware, I think that's a little bit larger than you guys require, but it was existing, so I didn't want to get into any permitting in the right-of-way and stuff like that. I just kind of left it as-is and we kind of went with that.
What's the existing condition?
Right now, what this is, you have, it's kind of hard to see, but the gray scale, so you pull in and there's a one-car garage where it says concrete drive. Um, you pull in, um, and there's a one-car garage right in front of the concrete drive, and that's the only impervious, and the rest is all lawn area. Um-
Okay, any, any trees?
Um, well, not, not anymore. He previously did and got in trouble with conservation, but that was before I got involved. So.
If you look on the plan, there's three, uh, trees that were on the plan. Those were, and I, forgive me, I don't remember the, the species trees, but, um, when he, after conservation, um, reviewed this, they had him plant these three trees on the lot.
Is the building moving or is it-
The building's-
No, nothing. The building's not changing at all. It's the existing building, nothing's changing. Just, the only thing is I'm adding, obviously, the impervious with the drive. So I had to do a rain garden for the stormwater in the back. Um, so we did three test pits, as you could see, uh, in the area of the rain garden. And just real quick, those three trees actually, conservation emailed me and said that Mike planted them on the Abutts property. So, um, I went out there to confirm that Friday afternoon, they are on the, Abutts property. So she asked that I throw in the plan, um, proposed relocation of the three magnolia trees. So he will move them. She wants them within, uh, the twenty-five foot no disturb, but obviously on his property. So that's where I show them there on the plan. So that's, that's proposed location. Right now, they're about seven feet over the property line.
Monica, what, what else are, um, so where do we stand from our end?
Um, well, in terms of some of the non-compliances, um, issues, probably not the best way to phrase that. Um, so as, um, as the engineer noted, that the curb cut, um, goes above the, the maximum. The maximum is, uh, twenty-five in that area. Um, and I think I, I hope I included that in your, in your staff report. Also, um, they're required to have, um, planting around the, the area. And what now, you can see, uh, grass in the front and the back, but not, but not the side. Um, and then there was also a concern in terms of the traffic flow. Um, and, uh, you'll see that noted in your, in your write-up. So basically, when you're turning onto the, the site headed, um, and you make a left-hand turn into the site, you have a potential of conflict, um, with the, with anyone exiting over here. So that's something I just wanted to, to point out. So again, if you're turning into the site and circu, circulating here, this driver over here, you-
You're cross, right?
Yeah, you're cross. Thank you.
Oh, is it, yeah.
This, one thing I think that's important to note is, he has three company vehicles. It's, it's a very small business. It's not, um, it's a pest business, so no clients are really coming to the business. I mean, it's gonna be leaving in the morning, and then, you know, maybe nine to four business hours, I'm not really sure. But, and someone- know, maybe nine to four business hours, I'm not really sure, but, and someone pulling in the afternoon, so it could be like, people are coming and going, and it's, you know, an accountant or anything like that, so.
You actually have a little bit of a problem here, because the building's located in the middle. You know, normally, you would put all the parking on one side, and you would go in and out of that side, but the problem is you don't have that much room. So I think what you proposed is, okay, you'll come in off of the old curb cut, go around the back of the building, park there, on the one side, and then continue to exit out.
One way, yep, all the way around, yep.
Yeah. I mean, I think that's what you did. You know, it's not great from my perspective that you would have to put all parking, I mean, you know, pave the front, but I'm not sure, given the wetlands in the back, there's any other way you can do it.
Yeah, I mean, I kind of, you know, due to obviously also having to do the rain garden, you know, I put the rain garden in the back because I had to deal with the stormwater. So the site being as small as it is, it was kind of tricky to size the rain garden to, you know, take care of all the storm events. So this is, I kicked it around, this is kind of the only way to really felt for safe travel was to go around the building, because you can't have people screaming off 114 and pulling right in front of the building. You know, we want people to safely be allowed to pull off, slow the speed, go around, park, and then just pull out, and making the left turn should be no problem, because, you know, you can cross the lanes, then go into the right, you just kind of merge right on to 114 there.
Then one thing I do want to point out that you may want to consider too, is there's no, there wasn't like a signage detail provided, so in terms of like the business sign or stop signs or one-way signs, I mean, that's definitely something absent from the plan, and maybe, you know, if you happen to come in and you don't notice the marking on there, maybe you need a one-way sign, or a stop sign over toward, you know, at the exit, or something like that. So just some things to keep in mind.
I do agree. I mean, if there are four people working there, I think they'll be able to probably figure it out. But at the same time, maybe someday, if there are more people, or it's a different use, or something like that, so.
So I added, there's four spots, because he has three company vehicles now, and he has all smaller pickup trucks, like Honda Ridge Line and Ford Ranger, stuff like that. So I just added an extra spot for, you know, down the road, if he decided to expand and get an extra employee, or something like that, you know, it'd be a little more suitable for the future as well. And this plan does reflect Mass DOT's proposed 114 improvements. I have that plan here. I got this last week, so I don't, you're gonna see on the revised plan, but I had to shift it towards the building more, where my drive originally was. I had to shift it towards the building to allow that I'd be off that 10-foot shared-use lane there. So it's the back of the shared-use lane. Then there's a two-foot strip ramp proposing a two-rail fence to separate vehicles from pedestrians. And then, like I said, for my park drive would be two-foot gap of gravel with the two-foot, two-rail fence, and then would be the shared path right outside of that.
You know, this is an interesting district, because there's all the old houses, and this is what we ended up with, is a compromise between residential and commercial. And I think you're, it's a fairly small impact, even though the lot's small. But if you look at where the parking is, that's pretty close to the house next door, and I think people, I assume, probably still live in that. What, are you gonna put a fence there?
Yeah, there's a fence. You can see the X's. I think I call it out as a proposed two-rail wood fence. He was willing to put a privacy fence as well, but I just wanted to put everything on the plan that he was thinking about doing. So he could put a privacy fence. It is three feet off the property line, which is the minimum for the parking. So, like I said, I kind of had to, in order to make the turns, I had to kind of get it, unfortunately, as close as I could there, to the property line.
Okay, but it will be a fence that would cover the lights and...
Yeah, I mean, he could...
...muffle the sound a little bit.
I called it a two-rail fence, because he liked the look of it, but he, I'm sure, would be more than open to put a privacy fence, like something a little bit more.
That's the guy next door, or your client?
No, my client, Mike. I think he'd be open.
He ought to probably talk to the people that live next door and ask them what they would prefer.
Yeah. I think that's kind of, I think next door, I think that maybe another business of sorts is going, and you're saying maybe like a dog kennel, yeah, I'm not really sure.
But all, sort of, still, I think the same basic principle holds. You don't want to have lights shining in.
Yeah, yeah, absolutely, yeah. So, yeah, there's a fence, so he is willing, he is proposing a fence, and like I said, we could just change the type of fence. I think that'd be something that's easy.
Does he keep pesticides and tigers' materials on site?
Not, not that I'm aware of. I mean, I've been there, and I know he's operating out of it now, and I've never seen anything outside. It's really clean property, I don't see anything.
And the building itself is not changing, right?
No, nothing, nothing in the building's changing, like not expanding the footprint or anything.
Because the, with the new paving, how does the stormwater flow? You have a rain garden, does everything flow to that?
Yeah, everything goes to the rain garden.
Nothing goes towards the street?
No, I'm taking, I'm taking everything on. Because that's how it naturally went anyways, the grading, you'll see the grading at the front, it's the lowest points in the back right, as you look at it. So everything is already flowing that way, so I kind of just went with what the flow was, and, you know, continued on. So basically, my rain garden's taking everything.
Questions about like the calculations and whatnot, but I think you started making the edits, but this would be something that I would have to go back to them to make sure that that issues are satisfied.
What's going in the proposed shed?
I'm not sure what's going in the shed. I mean, he could keep some tools, or I'm not really sure. I did move the shed with my new plan, because it is in the setback line there.
Let's get an answer on that, because...
Sure.
Whether that stays there, gets moved, or what's in there.
Yeah.
Because that's also pretty close to a property line as well.
I'm probably, I moved it to where the raised garden bed is, that's gonna be removed.
Okay.
It's gonna end up being in that grass area there, so it's, you know, inside the setback, you know. Because I really don't have much space to put it. That's why I kind of just jammed it over there at first, and...
Okay.
But I did, oops, sorry, go ahead. I did, from the comments, from the peer review, I did go through, and I did make all those revisions this afternoon. Like I said, I have an updated plan reflecting all those, but I'm gonna have to do a formal filing with you guys, getting, making sure everything's met, so.
Let's do that again. I do, read through the staff report as well.
Yeah.
You know, I get, I think we get where you're going with this. I'd like to have some more thought into the exit going on to 114. I just want to make sure that that's the safest possible way in and out, or if there's a way to go in and then come back out the same way. I don't know.
Yes.
And then just work with the peer reviews, and then we'll look at it again at our next meeting.
Oh, cool, yeah. Yeah, I should probably ask the guys in the future. Like I said, I did, I already went through the staff review and peer review, so I did touch on a lot of that stuff. It wasn't too bad, so.
And Department review from Fire, they were asking for a sweatpath analysis, so that's something that would have to be supplied as well.
The lieutenant is out until tomorrow.
Yeah.
So I did reach, and no one could talk me about it, except for him, so he is out on vacation until tomorrow. So I haven't been able to...
Did DPW have any thoughts about the exits, entrance?
I submitted to DPW and have not heard back from them.
I saw a lot of that as well, so.
Is there any sight lighting?
No, there's no sight lighting. I mean, I'm not sure if he has, off memory, I think he probably has a few spotlights, like maybe in the backyard, and maybe one over the garage. I'm not...
That are existing, or...
That are existing, that he hasn't. So I didn't want to necessarily add lights and make a bigger deal. I didn't think it was necessary for something. Like I said, they're gonna park the vehicles, and they're gone, or they might even take them home, just in case they need to have them to go in the office and back out. But it's gonna really be low volume, the traffic. I mean, like I said, there's three, four guys, I think he has two working for him right now.
And what's the, is this the current use, the pest control business?
Yeah, he's running the pest control business out of it now. So he just, like I said, he just wants to make it more, you know, operational, more professional.
Okay, it's a good start, and just keep working the planning and everyone else to get the details kind of sharpened.
I agree.
Okay, thank you.
All right, thank you.
All right, continued public hearings. Is Osge to continuance?
Yes, they submitted not only continuance to the next meeting, but they've also extended final action on a definitive subdivision. That was, actually, tonight was, you were scheduled for final action. They've asked to continue that to February 28th.
So let's do... So what's the extension time to file? Will they go as to...
They gave you till the 28th, so that gives you one more, one more meeting, so if there happens to be a...
Let's just make them, go ahead, I'm sorry.
So our next meeting is...
The 25th.
25th.
So again...
I think you should accept the extension anyway.
Right, so let's do that first.
Yeah, I'd make a motion to accept a request for extension for filing the definitive plan for Osge landing.
Motion made to... To accept the request for extension till February 28th, and a second, Aaron?
All right.
A second, and all in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Okay, get a motion to continue the public hearings for 1600 Osge, 1600 Osge LLC, 1600 Osge Hillwood Enterprises, all four public hearings.
So moved.
Can we get a second? All in favor? Aye. Okay. 4-High Street, continued public hearing, application for Sub-District A definitive master plan special permit. Okay. Good evening, gentlemen. All right, so why don't we start with, where, so last time we were waiting on test pit data.
Sure.
Why don't we start with that, and then we'll go to any other new developments?
Sure. So since the last time we were here, about a month ago, the test pits are complete and have been submitted. We've submitted those to both planning board and conservation. We're reviewing those with Conservation Commission tomorrow night. We've also submitted another round of peer review comments have gone through related to the stormwater. There is a pending peer review letter from Horsley Witten that Tyne Bond is updating the plans to address those final comments from Horsley Witten. And then, we think after that, we'll have a sort of a clean sign-off from Horsley Witten. So that's in process right now as well. The other big thing that we've done...
Go ahead, yes.
...on stormwater and test pit, any concerns? Does it look like...
Once the peer reviewers go back and forth, and we'll get everything signed off on?
Yeah, but there'll be another round of back and forth. There'll be plan updates required based on those comments, so there'll be revised civil plans.
And nothing jumped out as...
There's, there's one structure that doesn't have the appropriate separation from groundwater.
Okay.
And so David and I had a brief conversation. He's reached out to his engineers. His engineers feel comfortable that they'll be able to address the comment.
Great.
So we just have to let that play out.
Okay.
That's great.
Great. So, those are really, and then we also put together a de-watering plan, which was submitted to, it was Conservation Commission asked for it, but I just submitted it to both, both boards, just as a precaution, so everyone had the same information. The other big question as of last time was, you know, the density of the, overall density of the project, and the height of the building specifically. So we have worked closely with RCG over the last month to renegotiate the project, so that we are in a position that we can move forward with two four-story residential buildings with 170 residential units. So TAT is here, and they are, they don't have plans to present tonight, because we're just working on the plans for the 170 units. But it's the exact same footprints as were previously reviewed by the board. They are four-story buildings, and there's a few internal tweaks to the building, and some elevation changes, just based on the fact that it's a little bit shorter. But other than that, it's in keeping with what we've previously presented. And those will be ready probably for next week, so by the next hearing, you should have revised civil plans, which tie out to the Horsley Witten comments, and a final set of architectural plans, which tie out to the density that we talked about last time.
So David, you envision it'll look pretty much like the project we've been presented, without the, just has four stories.
Yes.
Flat roofs?
Yep, flat roofs. You know, really, it'll look very similar.
Same footprints, same distances from...
Same front door locations, same distances from property lines. The clubhouse footprint has not changed, so that building remains the same as you've previously seen, so that's not changing. It's really just, you need to take the top floor of the building, and some internal movements to make the unit count to be 170, and then taking just a fresh look at the exterior, the facades of the building, and just making it, having it make sense for a four-story building versus a five-story building.
Any step downs in the height towards High Street?
There's no step downs in the project anymore. It's all four, it's just four, two four-story building, two four-story residential buildings.
The clubhouse remains detached?
The clubhouse remains detached, and it remains...
How many stories for that?
That's one story, but it's a little bit higher floor to floor. But it's the same, it's the same clubhouse you reviewed previously. It's not a different clubhouse.
Parking, subdivision, all about the same.
Same.
What's the breakdown of number of bedrooms?
Sure. I have it here. We're still finalizing it, but preliminarily, the last submitted plan was 9% studios. It remains 9% studios. The last plan was 40% one-bedrooms. The current plan's 38% one-bedrooms. Previous plan was 47%, 47% two-bedrooms. It's now 49% two-bedrooms. Previous was 5% three-bedrooms. The current's 5% three-bedrooms. So some minor tweaks between the ones and twos, but otherwise, percentage-wise, it's exactly the same.
Okay. Have any comments?
So the outstanding peer review was also Fisco. Police and Fire had to weigh in on the analog communities that were used in the Fisco. They both signed off on that peer review as well.
From your perspective, assuming we get back the stormwater and peer reviews and that information, would we be prepared for a draft decision for the next meeting?
We could be prepared, yeah.
Okay. Does anybody else have, I can't think of any more questions or comments?
Well, I think the, as the planning department staff has pointed out, there's the issue of, the concern about access through Sutton Pond condominiums. Is any further negotiations or conversations about that?
So we haven't discussed it directly with Sutton Pond, but as I discussed with Gene earlier, if the board was interested, we would be open to putting a dollar amount as a condition in there, saying, I put $25,000, for example, to Sutton Pond condominiums to give them as a financial contribution, to be able to put in whatever traffic mitigation they wanted, gates, or whatever controls they wanted on their own land, as a condition of my permit, as a mitigation measure to the water.
And I think we discussed if it isn't mitigation for gates, maybe tree plantings where they see fit on their property. So I guess we'd leave it a little bit broader in terms of mitigation that they deem important.
You, one of you or both of you, reach out to them to see what their thoughts are on that? I like keeping it broad, I think that's a good idea. But if they have something in mind that they'd like to do, and if that something in mind had a cost, that would certainly be helpful.
Yep. And the other item we discussed was maybe potentially getting a list of abutters that are interested in a fence, if that would help, like a six-foot fence, try to keep it consistent along, probably primarily the High Street residents, if there was a fence existing, or try to tie into an existing fence, and condition either addresses, or again, try to solicit who would be interested in that.
So, and this is along which, along where, along High Street, or along both?
So any direct abutter, right? So it could be Perry Street, High Street.
Okay.
If there's any ability, the stone buildings on Sutton Pond, to do any type of mitigation in terms of either a fence or trees along that line. I think Avalon would be amenable to working with the group.
Okay.
And the other, as just a reminder, what came out of the civil review is, the peer review response was requesting that the board condition some type of partnership in terms of the Sutton Street, High Street, Poor Street, Chadwick Street intersection. The traffic review analysis had some like low-cost measures that could improve that. Avalon's response to that was they would work with the town, and there was another condition associated with High Street and Prescott Street. Different type of mitigation, but both of those peer responses contemplated conditioning some support from Avalon.
Okay, so those are good conditions we can put in. In terms of the screening, I mean, we'll have a screening condition. I would ask Avalon then to reach out to direct abutters, just to see if they're interested. And I'd ask any direct abutters, if you are interested in screening, it would likely be on your property, but Avalon would, you know, pay for it, to reach out either to me or to Gene by email or by the phone. If it's gonna be a fence, it would likely be a consistent fence along, you know, whichever property lines it's in. It wouldn't, we're not gonna have white and then black, and then different, it would be one consistent fence. But if they're willing to do that, we just need to know that you want it. Obviously, nobody's putting anything on your property if you don't want it. But if you do, reach out to us, so we can at least try to arrange that. Okay. Okay, so this is still a public hearing, so I will take comment. Again, we've been through a lot of this, so if it's, you know, the new information is that there are... that their proposal is going to be a hundred and seventy units, it's going to be four stories. And we've basically seen the plans for those, you know, just with the five, the fifth story taken off. But if anyone has additional comments, questions, or things they'd like us to hear, they, you can come up. Our plan is to have a draft decision and to vote on this at the next meeting. That's the plan at least.
Hi.
Hello.
I'm from Sutton Pond. I'm asking again about the fifteen-foot distance from our property line to building A. I, Avalon tells me it's yours, your decision. You tell me it's Avalon's decision. Nobody wants to make a decision. This is a huge issue for Sutton Pond. I'm not speaking on behalf of the association, but I'm speaking on behalf of a lot of my fellow unit owners. This is a big deal. And if it's fifty to seventy feet on one side and right on our property line on the other side, I mean, there's an issue of fairness too. So, you know, would somebody please make a decision? I mean, this is a big deal. Thank you.
Hi, good evening. Steven Saraceno, one oh-two High Street. I haven't been able to attend a few of these meetings. I broke my leg a couple of months ago, so finally happy to be here again. First of all, I'd like to say that I do really appreciate the efforts that Avalon has taken to listen to some of the concerns of the residents in the neighborhood. But I still think there's a couple more things that we need to talk about. The biggest concern, I think that a lot of people will side with me on this, is still traffic issues. We said at the very beginning that building heights and locations and stuff were important, but not nearly as important as traffic. So some of the things that I would like to, to mention, and I don't know if we talked about it all or in any of the peer reviews or whatever, is that as you're coming down High Street and you're making that turn into that road that's been approved already, I don't know if we're putting a name on that road yet, has there been any thought about widening High Street to create a third turning lane there so that we're not creating backup in traffic? Because I see as people are coming into that area with increased traffic, there's going to be a queue there. There's going to be two, three people, what have you, stopped at some point to make that turn. People coming southbound on High Street may not have enough time to stop. It's going to cause more accidents in that area. We've already seen several accidents happen between Prescott and High Street. The other thing was, and I know you had mentioned, Gene had mentioned that, that there's possibly some reworking of those intersections. We all know that those intersection of High Street and Sutton Street's a horrible intersection. We know that Prescott and High Street's horrible. Some ideas to help mitigate some of the traffic in those areas, maybe get rid of the Y at Prescott and High Street and make that a definitive left or right-hand turn.
So as part of any vote, I don't think we're going to make any, I don't think we can make any changes to High Street. But the conditions that we talked about in putting in the decision is that Avalon will work with DOT and the town to look at these intersections. And I mean, I don't know that, that widening High Street is a possibility, but I'm sure they can talk about it. And looking at those intersections to see what modifications can and should be made. So it's not, we're not going to say you have to change it in any particular way, but as part of this, they are going to need to, the parties are going to need to, including the town, are going to need to look at it and hopefully that helps.
Well, it's either way, whether this project happens or not. If there's incidents now, it needs to be looked at.
Agreed. And that's part of my point is that with the traffic study that was done, I mean, it was, it made extremely evident that we do have issues there. Saying that, you know, adding this project isn't going to add to that, even though we've been told that, it's not really, it's got to add something to it, you know, has to. So I think that, that does warrant, you know, we as a town need to do something. We need to look further into that. There was discussion about creating another exit out going down Walker Road. I know that that was beaten up and we didn't get anywhere with that. I'm still a huge proponent on getting out to Sutton Street through Clean Harbors. They're lifting that property a good twelve feet in that area. There's a twelve-foot high retaining wall going in there. That'll elevate you quite well when an abutment that's needed for a bridge that can go, get over that short section of wetlands. And then it's a matter of procuring the land from Clean Harbors or whatever we got to do to massage it to get out to Sutton Street. I think as a town, we really need to be thinking about that. You know, we're about to change our downtown, huge. Davis and Ferber is synonymous with North Andover. It has been for over two hundred years. It's going to go by the name Avalon soon. That's a huge change. So I think as a town, we need to do something. We need to do something to help alleviate that area. It's a problem now. The records that they had brought before us that showed the traffic studies show that we have problems. We've had several accidents. We're going to have more. We've had one death that I'm aware of that I've lived there long enough to see on that street. That's one death too many. We, we, we need to do something. Now, I'm not coming down on Avalon, but we as a town, we really need to look at it. We've worked really hard and diligently on creating a master plan, really hard on our housing plan. We need to really look at that and follow it to the best that we can and mold and shape our town around that. You know, when the residents got together to help create the master plan, some of the things that they talked about in the downtown, specifically that they were looking for is new development in the downtown that would have housing above the first floor and retail down below. Now, RCG has done a great job molding the mills to take care of some of those issues. But we're bringing in a community within a community and there's no retail space. The people who live in this property in Avalon are going to keep to themselves for the most part. I know that Dave had said later that they'll contribute to the surrounding neighborhood and what have you. I hope they do. I think most of them are going to be cost burdened, so they won't have any money to do that, but that's another story altogether. Reading more from our master plan, you know, we talked about some major concerns with the people and the residents of the town. Talked about traffic congestion increasing with more housing density. These are concerns and what are we doing? We're creating more housing density. Housing density that just adds and adds and adds. It's been mentioned a number of times about all of the housing that's going in in a short period, in a short area rather, in a short period of time. The other thing that concerns me, and again.
Just one, just, just, on that, it's hard when you, there are, I would say there are parts of the master plan that are going to suit your argument and there are parts that are going to be against it. Because there's parts of it that talk about housing, housing downtown, housing specifically on this property as well as downtown revitalization. So I think you're right, that traffic is going to be a concern. It's always, it is a concern there now, it's going to be a concern there in the future.
Right, so my, my question is, is what are we doing about it?
Well, that's why we're putting conditions.
But Avalon is before this planning board asking for a special permit.
Yeah.
It's a huge special permit. Anything more than seven units requires a special permit, or seven or more, I believe. Seven to a hundred and seventy is a big stretch. There are things that are happening here. You know, we had, the school report was done. The assistant superintendent came in, said not a big deal. But yet we're always complaining that we're busting out of our seams. The high school graduation last year was the largest graduation that the school, the high school has ever seen in the history of North Andover. Everybody was applauding that. Sounds great, yes, but we can't fit it. You know, we have, we have one middle school. How many elementary schools feeding into one middle school? So we said thirty-some odd students being added from this project, sound, doesn't sound like much, but thirty from this project, forty from that project, fifteen over here. It all adds up. All those whiskers make a beard. We as a town need to manage that and I don't think we're doing a very good job. I've lived in this town since nineteen eighty-six. I've seen a lot of changes happen. Some good, some not so good. We're all human. We're all going to make mistakes. I get that. But we really need to read what we've put together and try and follow it to the best of our abilities. And if that means leaning on someone like Avalon to work with us, they want something, we need something, we work together. It's a special permit.
This process has done that.
Well, I think, here's, here's the way I look at it. We have peer review and I understand that peer review is to help us all out to understand what it is that's being submitted to us. But I don't think peer review goes any further than reviewing what it is that's been given to them for, for accuracy and content. Let, let me ask, I could be wrong. Did our peer review and transp-? Okay, did our peer review and transportation go out and do their own traffic study? Do they, do they monitor the number of cars traveling down that road and the speeds? Yes or no? Because to me, that would be being proactive for our peer review. Otherwise, they're taking the data that's being given them and look.
It's put by an engineer and submitted with an engineer's stamp and we have a certified engineer qualified to peer review those data. And so.
And I believe that data matched other traffic studies that were done recently in the base of terms of the numbers.
Look, I understand that. I understand how the peer review goes in that respect. And I don't mean any disrespect to an engineer with a stamp, okay? But they're looking at, at the content of the data that's been given to them and seeing how it was used and how the formulas were applied and what the end result is and does it make sense? But they're not doing their own studies. We don't have that kind of money and time to do our own studies. Speaking of studies, I want to go back to the traffic a little bit because maybe I'm misunderstanding something here. But part of the traffic report that was submitted, there's a bar graph in there. In this bar graph, it states existing and, and site traffic. And I think we all remember it, where it showed the orange bars to depict the increase of flow of traffic onto High Street from Avalon putting in their project. Now, it shows from what I see from extrapolating from the data, from five AM to nine AM, fifty-nine cars are going to exit. That doesn't deplete the hundred parking, shared parking spaces that they need just to get people who might be coming in in that timeframe, if there happens to be a hundred people coming in. The only people that are in this parking lot at night at, at this point in time is who? Nobody. So when, when Avalon, right, right now, there's three, three people utilizing this area. There's the West Mill, there's the MVR TA, and then there's Avalon at some point. So it'll be those three people, right? So at night, who's going to be there if this project or a similar project goes through? The people who live in the project. Hopefully, nobody should be there for the West Mill and the MVR TA is gone. So if in five AM to eleven AM, they're saying only fifty-nine cars are going to leave? As people are coming in, they have to work. MVR TA's coming in, West Mill people are coming in. So I'm, I'm painting a picture where all the parking spaces are full because there's a potential that will happen. But if only fifty-nine are leaving, all I'm getting at is there's not enough, there's something wrong with that data. There's not enough people coming out for the people that may be coming in. And when peer reviews look at things like that, they look at the formulas, they look at how it was calculated. Oh, yeah, it looks right. It makes sense. You know, two of the charts that were in this talk about, it's kind of, kind of tough for me to tell exactly what transpired because it's showing hundreds of cars and I would assume this on a daily basis. But then when they do the speed, they're talking about thousands of cars. So I don't know what time period that that data was taken from, so it's kind of hard for me to truly extrapolate. So I could be slightly off with my numbers, but I don't think I'm that far off. The other thing that concerned me about the traffic study is that early on, I was watching the board and watching some of the people in the neighborhood struggle to try and get at a number of how many people are really coming out at that spot, that where the roadway meets High Street, the unnamed roadway meets High Street. And I thought to myself, Sutton Pond has a similar number of units. There's a hundred and eighty-something units in Sutton Pond? Hundred and eighty-eight? Okay, hundred and eighty-eight units. Why not do a traffic study right at their only point of egress to see what their movement is and what their contribution is to the point that was studied? Because the point that was studied has their data, West Mill and MVR TA. This, it gives you a number, but if you really want to sit comfortable with a number in your belly, why, why not, why not study right at their only means of, of egress? So that wasn't done. So that's a concern to me. I just think that there's something really wrong with the transportation numbers and I'd hate to find out that once we get into the development, that it's all going to come to a head and then we're going to go, now what? And we're in our downtown and boy, we're going to look bad when the Eagle Tribune shows up and starts doing a write-up of what we look like when we're out there. The other things that concern me is why we waited so long to do a geodetic study, to do geologic, why did we wait so long to dig some holes out there? And, and maybe I don't have all the information, but the test pits that I saw were dug only in the areas where the infiltration system is going. No test pits were done in the area where the buildings are going.
David? We did our own borings for foundation design to try to understand what the subsurface soil looked at before we got involved in the project. So we would understand generally, our geotechnical engineer did those borings and shared those with us in RCG. Under the DEP stormwater regulations, you need to do specific test pits exactly where you're going to infiltrate the water because they want to make sure that the ground can accept the amount of water that you're trying to put in, in. And that's why the test pits were done. The test pits that are prescribed by DEP were done in exactly the locations that the stormwater infiltration chambers are. And we couldn't do those test pits until we determined exactly where the chambers were going to go. And once we did that, we did the test pits shortly thereafter.
Yeah, I understand. But we had preliminary meeting before they even came to the planning board and I asked if soil studies were done and I was told no at those meetings. So my biggest concern is if you're not doing soil studies, how do you even know where to place your buildings? What if groundwater was two feet below grade where they want to put in an eight-foot deep foundation? That's going to be a hell of a de-watering situation. So soil testing was not done at that point. And if there was, the day, I've never seen the data and I don't think it's ever been presented to the planning board. So I've said, I've said a number of times, you know, to the, when I've stood before this board that we have a bylaw in place, I understand that, that there are things that RCG can do with this property. And I understand that, that some may be better, some may be worse, but I think we need to weigh it all out. And I also understand, we have been, but there have been some things that have been missing. Some of the things that may come up in, in your final write-up, I'd like to talk about tonight as well because I need to feel comfortable about them. I want to know, with all, with all due respect, I think, I think I'm allowed my time.
No, actually, actually, you're allowed the time.
This is a public hearing.
You're right, but it is a, no, hold on. You don't have infinite time. You don't, okay? We've had many, many hearings.
But I have huge concerns.
And I don't want to, let, let me, I need to, I need to be allowed to carry on.
No, you don't, hold on, you don't.
Planning board and the zoning board in this town are in place.
Hold on, please. Hold on, please. Okay, there may be other people that want to talk. If there's not, then we can come back to you. What time is it? About ten, fifteen minutes already? We need five more minutes. Please make the points that you want to make. Then we'll take anyone else who wants, hold on. Hold on. Trying to run a meeting where we have other things as well, okay? So five more minutes, make the points you want to make, then we'll take anyone else who also wants to talk. If we still have more time or if there's more thing that you really think you need to say, I'll have you come back up, okay? Go ahead.
I wanted to ask the board if they understood what a brownfield presence site meant, meant.
No, we're not, not asking questions, no.
I'm not asking questions, okay? Well, I, I have questions. I want to know what we're planning on doing for these poor people in Sutton Pond while we're recreating this road that is their only means of egress. Will that be in the write-up as well? How are they going to get out of their site when this road is torn up, drainage is being put in? And where are the construction vehicles coming in, out of to develop this site? Look, these are legitimate questions. I am not saying this to be a burden or thorn in anybody's side, but they're very important questions and they need to be answered. Now, I don't know if it's going to be in the write-up, so I've got to pose it now. Huge concerns to me. An ambulance has to get out of there and they're going across a gravel area where someone's got a hole ten feet deep because they're putting in a catch basin. Where are they going?
David, do you want to talk about the construction of the, any construction on the road?
Sure. So when the subdivision road's constructed, there will be a staging logistics plan that's come up by our general contractor that we will need to keep access to Sutton Pond at all times.
And past decisions, it's typical to, to condition access, staging, construction And past decisions, it's typical to condition access, staging, construction entrance, vehicle, traffic patterns.
Right, no, I understand that and I've read it. But my question is, is at what point does that get submitted for review to say, hey, it works for us? Or do we just go by them saying, hey, we're going to create a road that allows them to get in and out?
It'll be a condition, access will be a condition of the permit.
And the access, I would assume, would be different for the residents as it is for the construction vehicles, correct? There's going to be a lot of, there's going to be a lot of heavy trucks moving in and out of that site on a daily basis. They cannot be using the same road that the people of Sutton Pond are going to be using. So I'm just wondering how we might work that out. Not just Avalon, could be anybody that's going to further develop this site. These are, but these are concerns. They're definite concerns. I'm going to try and be real quick here because I've only been given the five minutes, so I'm just going to blast right through these and you guys can think about them. The truck path that we were given for fire apparatus and what have you. That analysis was based, and please correct me if I'm wrong, but I viewed it as based on 35-foot truck length. The fire truck going through Avalon Bay, I don't even look at that one because if Avalon Bay doesn't go in, the fire truck has no way of turning around on that property. If that parking lot didn't exist, they'd be in a lot of trouble. So past studies that I've done would include the length of a truck anywhere from 45 to 55 feet. I would like to see that turning radius happen on that street that's already been approved because I don't think it can happen. I'm there every day and I've been home for two months. I've seen a lot of things happen, include being kept up till 2:00 in the morning on the night of Martin Luther King's holiday because they were moving snow around from one site to another. We had no snow coming in, but they're moving snow around. You know, there's no regulation. I called the police, they didn't do anything. This is going to happen, it's going to continue to happen. Ledge provisions.
Wait, 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 wait. The fire truck, it was the template that was given us by the fire department. They've signed off on the truck.
I agree with the fire truck. I'm talking about the trucks that now come into the West Mill to service the West Mill. The 18-wheelers that come in there on a daily basis and turn around in the parking lot that you're going to have a building on.
It was a planned review during the subdivision. It was a planned review by.
It was a definitive subdivision.
And who on our end reviewed that?
TEC did.
TEC reviewed it, DPW looked at it. I don't know the fire did, it wasn't the jurisdiction, but the swept path for the fire truck was reviewed as part of this application.
Right, I saw that. And the path goes through Avalon's property. So what I'm saying is that please review it again because the one that I see shows, and I'm not talking about the fire path, I'm talking about.
Accessing the loading docks.
Access and loading, okay? The mapping that was done was used modeling a truck that's 35 feet long. Ledge provisions, we're going to hit ledge. I hit ledge in the backyard of 90 High Street when I put the pool in five feet down. It's going to happen. So I don't know what, again, it might be in your write-up. I don't know what we're going to do when we find ourselves, we have to stop blasting. If I was buying a site like that and putting in buildings like that, I'd be riddling it with holes right now just trying to find out what I'm up against. I haven't seen that happen. Mr. Simons, with all due respect, I'm not saying the people aren't smart. Well, I'm just saying we're human, we're human and we make mistakes.
No, I know we make mistakes.
To engineer is human and to make mistakes is human. So all I'm trying to do is bring my attention to the planning board because we're at your mercy, we really are. And I think that we haven't done a good job for these poor people because I think at day one, we should have laid out what we were looking for as a town and we should have molded it at that point.
But let me tell you, I think you've made some excellent points, but you've talked way past your sell. In fact, you've been very patronizing with us.
No, I'm not, with all due respect. And last time you told me I was blocking up the wrong tree. My point is, is this is the only tree and the limbs are dying. I'm concerned as a resident in this town. I mean no disrespect to any member of this board, I really don't. It's a volunteer job, I understand it's difficult and you're doing the best you can. I'm simply here to try and help out. I apologize if I seem rude at times or if my voice escalates or if I take up too much time. But I've been sitting at home many nights, many nights, thinking about this project, not just because it's in my backyard, because it's going to change this town. It's going to change this town. That's huge. It does not sit well in my stomach. So I think about these things over and over again. I've done 1,000 different write-ups of what I might want to say and where I could go, but I knew that my time would be short.
Do you have any other questions?
Something specific to Avalon. I'd like to know, and I read in the write-up, that all of their trash is going to be internal. How and when are they going to be removing that trash from the building? Where on-site is the trash truck coming to remove the truck from the building? Remove the trash from the building?
So each building has its own trash room and trash chutes. The trash is stored within those rooms and then at a predetermined time with the waste management company, they'll come pick up all the dumpsters, leave them there. Our onsite management team will put the dumpsters back into the building so they're not outside for very long. They're outside, you know, for a period of time right before they get picked up and then have to get picked up to get brought right back in. And that's all with, both of the trash rooms face the courtyard of our building, so it's all internal and none of it goes towards Sutton Pond and none of it goes towards High Street.
Okay.
Private hauling.
Okay, so the lane that's behind the pool area is used specifically for?
That's emergency vehicles.
Emergency vehicles only, okay? And the dog kennel that you had in that area, is that still proposed?
Yeah, a small dog, I wouldn't say a dog kennel. I would say there's a, on the landscape plan, there's shown to be like a small dog park.
Well, are you proposing dog care for your residents?
No.
I'm just curious because my backyard in my house is right there. I want to know if I'm going to have dogs that are being kennelled while somebody's going to work.
It's a resident-only amenity.
So they'll come and go, use it for their dogs to do their thing and then back in, so it's not part of?
It's not part of a commercial business other than accessory to the apartments.
Okay. So just a couple of other points, and I'll try and be brief. I know I keep saying that, but the MVR TA parking that's there now, that's considered to be public parking because anybody can park there, right?
RCG's present.
No, I, well, what I'm getting at is that public parking is not allowed in the zone. In that zone or any overlaying zone, public parking is not allowed. So I don't know how we get away with that. I'm all for MVR TA parking, I just don't know how we get away with that. You can't allow, they can't allow somebody to park on their property any more than I can start to run a commercial business out of mine just because I own my land. What I'm saying is if you go through the allowed uses in those zones, public parking is not one of them. Public parking lot is not, it's not one of them.
I understand, but it's not, okay.
Can I, I don't know how I'm being confusing here.
When the U says public parking, that's like as a public parking lot.
Well, if, if anybody.
If they're allowing the MVR TA bus to park there, I wouldn't consider that public parking. But if you want to, if you want to ask the building commissioner, you can, but I'm not sure why that's relevant.
Well, how would you classify public parking? If somebody's going to a lot to take a bus that's taking this somewhere else, is it not public parking? RCG isn't giving me specific permission. They've got some sort of an agreement with MVR TA, so it is public parking. So I'm going to move quickly, I'm giving.
That happens now, so how is it different with the Avalon?
Because I don't think it's right.
We should probably stick to the project.
Well, I'm trying, again.
There may be issues in the neighborhood that should be addressed separately, not as part of.
Well, I don't know how to address them because, you know, I go down and I see the planning board and I make certain comments. I come here, I make certain comments. I don't know who's left to go and see. As a citizen, I have issues, I call the police department, things don't happen. I don't know what else to do. So I'm putting suggestions. We talked about traffic issues, I've got some suggestions. Another one is the double-stall garage that's across the street that now enters out onto High Street and he thought about entering it out onto Prescott. That's going to change the traffic flow on High Street. And then the other thing about that garage is it's being, from what I understand, being rented out to Merrimack College. So who do I ask that question to? Because again, when you read through what's allowed in that zone, that's not allowed. So I don't know.
The building commissioner.
The building commissioner.
Both the use associated with MVR TA transportation and Merrimack College, so.
Just trying to cut down on some of the traffic in our area, you know. Provisions trucks. I want to stay on High Street here for a minute. We need to, again, I know it's not an Avalon thing, but it may. I have to say this because it belongs to the area.
If it's not, no, if it's not related to the actual special permit, then we're not talking about.
But it ties into RCG's use and it's their property. Provision, all I'm getting at is that part of this.
You know well is, because you're in this business, because you obviously are in this business, you know you can't condition off-site improvements to something one of special.
Well, I know we can call that extortion, but I've seen it happen, it has happened to me. It has happened. I can bring you letters that can show you that, I have had to do that in certain towns.
I don't think you're counseling extortion, are you?
All I'm saying is we have issues on High Street. How else do we address them if we don't bring them to your attention?
I don't think anybody here disagrees with that, I just.
So, so RCG came before you at one point in time to do what they wanted to do with the property, whether it be restaurants or what have you. There had to be some discussion about the type of parking that was going to take place for each one of these uses. There had to have been some conditions that were set in place. So all I'm bringing to the board's attention is that I don't think they've been adhered to. We cannot have provisions trucks parking on High Street, double-parked on High Street that we as residents and people coming through have to move around and put ourself in harm's way by going on the opposite side of the road so we can move. Now, one truck, not a problem, you can be patient and wait. But I've been there numerous times where there are two or three trucks there. And God forbid there's an ambulance and I get taken away on an ambulance just a couple of months ago. So thank God it was just going, it's in the opposite direction because it was helpful. But I'm worried about these things. I don't know what else to do. I appreciate the time, I really do, but I don't know what else to do. I want to see something go through in this land. I think it's a great idea. I think, I just think that there are things that we need to really think about as a community. And please, just remember that we are changing this town. We're changing it for the next hundreds of years, hands down, the decisions that are being made right here and right now. Thank you for your time.
High Street. I'm going to modify some of the comments I'm going to make because the information I got tonight is a little different than what I have read in your agenda. So I really only have one question. I'm going to preface it by saying that I'm happy to see that there's movement from the five-story original plan. That's encouraging. I am disappointed that the November, whatever it was, 27, 26 meeting where most of the board, if not all the board, did support the three-floor maximum level and that seems to have been negotiated up to four. So that is disappointing. But now that I have the information about the rearrangement of the types of bedrooms and how many people they'll accommodate, or actually, that is my specific question. So you're saying there's going to be 170 units on four floors and that's going to be, no step downs or anything, that's going to be a flat four-floor level. So the redistribution or the reconfiguration of the bedrooms, the apartments, how does that affect the population that will be living there? Is it comparable? Is it, it seems like would that increase to, increase to 49% of the two bedrooms?
I think you can, I think you can answer that.
Okay.
In any, I can't tell you the exact number, I haven't calculated the exact number based on the bedroom count. I can have that for the next meeting. What I would say is in any instance, there's going to be a lot fewer people living in this at 170 than there were at 200 or 250. So we are continuing to sort of whittle this down to a much lower level of households. There's a few bedroom counts that moved up or down. It looks like it's 2% between the two different, two different floor plan types, which when you get to this number of units, it's just a difference between sort of one stack versus another stack and flexibility.
If we could get those numbers.
Sure.
Question, I would say though, so the two bedrooms went up 2%?
Well, 49% from what was it?
Forty-seven.
Forty-seven.
Oh, okay.
So that would be of 170 units, that would be about.
And the other one.
That would be about four units, so whatever four units is for two people. And then it went from two to one, it went down 2%, right?
All right, well, it would, it would be good to know. It sounds like it's mitigating the, the impact, the overall impact, but I kind of want to get a sense of what that really means in terms of people traveling, coming in and out and so forth.
If we could get the actual hard data, I think that's the most important, but it would be nice to see a comparison between 250 to 200 and 170. But really, at 170, how many people there are and how many cars you would expect based on the numbers you have. I think that's good to know.
Is the board at liberty to say anything about the negotiation from the three-floor recommendation?
I mean, I'm not sure what you mean by negotiation, there was no negotiation.
Okay, so you just presented it at the, that November, late November meeting and then it was basically?
So everything that happened, happened here at the various meetings.
And then they took away, whatever they took away from that.
Right, I think there, I think what happened, the board made its kind of feelings known. Avalon came back with an RCG about what they would feel comfortable with and it wasn't the three stories. And then we had a further discussion and kind of decided that, that, again, we haven't voted yet, but there was more of a consensus at the, of trying to vote on the four stories. So I mean, it was all, it would all have, there was nothing outside of these meetings.
That's fine, I just, of course, I was disappointed because that seemed like a reasonable plan.
One, I mean, we, again, we discussed the alternatives that might be available, the impacts of four versus five stories, the actual number differences, the differences in between 150, 170 units and four stories versus five stories versus having step downs and what might be something that we as a board could live with rather than some of the alternatives or what might be our ultimate ideal preference and what we could legally say no to.
All right, I don't know if there's any room for any more movement at this point, but.
Well, the vote's going to be next week, so. There certainly is, or not next week, the next meeting, I apologize, thank you. Next meeting, we're going to take a vote. So until we vote, nothing's official.
Well, we're putting our trust in you, as you know, and we appreciate all your efforts and we'll see how that all turns out. Thanks for the information and I would love to know a little bit more about those specifics in terms of numbers.
Before the next meeting, that would be great.
Thank you.
Okay, we'll try to post those online before the next meeting. Okay, anything else? Anything that anyone else wants to say, add?
I don't think we really ever addressed the setback question that was brought up by our first.
I missed, sir, yeah?
Our first speaker.
Yeah.
I know, I, no, I was just, we should close the loop on that. We've been addressing other questions and I feel it's warranted. I presume that that setback is the minimum. I heard 15 feet, I thought it was more than that.
No, it's, in that district, I think it's zero, but it's, they are compliant with zoning in terms of that. But I think it's, if you remember what we ended up doing, we spent an awful lot of time.
Twenty is what it is, is what the proposal is from the property. Twenty is what is required.
So I think we spent a lot of time trying to figure out, you never end up with sort of a perfect place to put, but we're trying to figure out how to place the buildings, organize the buildings so as to end up with sort of a optimal, under the circumstances, solution. And I think it, you know, I think it's the most feasible.
As I understand it.
I mean, it's, it's, it's.
The bylaw requires additional setbacks. Back to a residential zone, which High Street is in an off-road zone. Sutton Pond is in an industrial zone similar to this project. And so the setbacks are just different depending on side rear versus front and what zoning district you're setting back from, so.
So the current plan as proposed, which will be modified to have just four stories, is at 20 feet from the property line from Building A to Sutton Pond. So that's what's currently being proposed. There was discussion about trying to shift it to the right, shift it to the left, shift it in. I don't think we ever came to an accord on anything that we thought would work.
Well, I know that easy facilitism has always been an issue.
Yeah, good question. Are there balconies on all of the units, on all sides?
There are balconies on a lot of, a lot of the units, yes.
Has there been any thought to maybe limiting balconies in the area, especially closer to that smaller building at Sutton Pond or closer to High Street sort of to, as an extra?
We can, we can look at it as we develop this next round of architectural plans.
I'm just thinking because there's really no place that you can screen, at least on a Sutton Pond side.
Yeah, but is that much open or really? I said if there's that much open, if we haven't seen the architecturals revised, we may not want to vote.
We'll just, yeah, we'll see what everybody's.
I mean, I think that's a very good point because I think we raised a similar point from the very beginning of how does it look on that side because the scale of the buildings compared to single-family residential is stark, so.
Right, and I think it gives a little extra level of privacy for the residents as if you don't have four stories of balconies also overlooking you if it's all interior use. I think that could make a difference.
One more quick question that I think is going to help the residents understand this project a little bit more is that we had a plan, Avalon produced a plan at the last meeting that talked about the scale of the buildings, talked about the height of the buildings. One thing I think that would help everyone is if you put elevations on that rather than the height so that you can see the relative elevations from the building to the surrounding properties. Is that question understood?
Noted, I don't know, I mean, I guess I have to do it, but I understand your point.
Well, it'd be nice, especially like residents of Sutton Pond feel like they're going to be towered over. It'd be nice to know if the buildings are now in line with them, 10 feet taller than them, five feet below them or whatever.
Right, there was those sections that we cut through that we.
There was those sections that we cut through, that we provided from various view corridors, so I think that was in one of the comments that came from the board out of that, was when we had five stories, when they saw some of those sections and the grade changes, and that High Street, you know, in the R4 zone is higher than our site, and that mitigated some of the height difference, and then it sort of goes back down towards Sutton Pond, so. We review, it was discussed at, at a meeting.
Okay, thank you.
So, it's, it should all still be online, but you can come by planning?
No, I remember the cross-sections. I just know that there have been changes since then. So I was merely stating something that might help them get their point across, the residents are a little bit confused now that we're going down to four stories, you know, and based on knowing now where the groundwater is, if there's gonna be any elevation changes. There didn't seem to be any on, on the plans.
Yep.
But... When you get us the four-story plans, there would be elevations on there, right? Yeah, so they'll be on there. Okay. All right, so we'll continue.
I got one question. Do we have this elevation from our parking lot to the top of their building? We, I've brought this, well, due for Sutton Pond, I've brought this up many times, we are 10 foot lower than the...
Is that 10 foot everywhere in Sutton Pond, or is it...
If you, with the, with the proposed building's gonna go, if they're not gonna dig down, it's gonna be, I, I don't, I'm not, I'm not an engineer, don't, I don't play one on TV, but it is a different, there's a different, definitely a higher pitch on that, where the ball field is. And it is, and I know it's a grade, but, you know, and there's...
Right, no, my point is, I guess, I'm saying to where in Sutton Pond, because we're talking different places, there'll, there're different elevations too there. But yes, I agree.
The parking lot behind Building A is very low, compared to where, where their building, building's gonna go. So if it's, if it's this eight feet, nine feet difference in pitch, of, of height, that means that's, that's still a five-story building. And we try to explain that to you multiple times.
We understand.
So, you know, and I, and I'll yield back of time for this other gentleman, anytime he wants.
Good.
Yeah, I think that, when the board was asking that specific question following the balloon test, we also did the photorealistic renderings, which showed the five-story building. And when we did the five, photorealistic renderings of the five-story buildings, I think that's what prompted the board to say, maybe these should be four-story buildings, because we had them from the Sutton Pond parking lot, we had them from various view quarters throughout the neighborhood, and I think, following that review, the board said, we think it should be more like four stories. We went back and went back to the drawing board, and we're gonna come back with that proposal, so, I think those were probably the most telling graphics from how things look, and how the elevation changes from sideline to sideline, that we produced during the...
Going out and seeing the site visit, it was pretty clear that especially further back towards the ball field versus down, looking down on Sutton Pond, that there was a height difference.
The balloon testing though.
No, yeah, the balloon testing though.
I mean, I, I understand, I understand that all the simulations and like, like the backing of trucks and, the simulations don't mean anything. It's actual doing things that mean something. It's not, I, I assume, you know what assume does? Okay, so that's, that's my, that's my point. We, we were assuming a lot of things here that are gonna be perfectly fine, but I, I, I'll bet you we'll come back here in five years, if this goes through, and I bet you my, my thoughts are probably a lot more right than your thoughts are.
Well, it's engineering. Okay, all right, so, can we get a motion to continue until February 25th?
Second.
On favor?
Aye.
Continue until February 25th. Communications. Oh, wait a minute.
Communications, a minute, that's it.
We'll have a plain intermission after this.
No, you're halftime. Shakira and Jennifer Lopez.
He's gonna get a lot of money this next year.
But he is gonna get his...
But that's how you have to win, you have to win with a quarterback on his rookie deal, 'cause once he gets 40 million, how do you, how do you surround him?
Yeah, yeah, you gotta make your draft picks work.
All right, communications, Stevens Coolidge Place. This was a letter from, I believe from Gene, or from us?
Questioned that I draft this letter at the conclusion of the approval for the special permit for the 137 Andover Street trustees development, so...
Send the letter, I'll give it a mention. See it to the town manager, Board of Selectmen, as well as the Stevens Coolidge, the trustees, saying that, you know, they'd been granted their special permit, but we heard concerns from neighbors involving the number and scope of the events, the type of operation, music, alcohol, it's more kind of turning commercial in nature, and suggesting that a kind of collaborative group or effort be taken to monitor this, and to make sure that it's appropriate. Okay, so hopefully something will come out of that.
Yeah, so hopefully using, we had the condition that annually they'll report back, and using that report to kind of sit down, evaluate it, and see if any mitigation measures can be put in place if there's still issues, so...
But, when there's an event there, and specifically, I guess, when there's an event that serves alcohol, they, they go before the Board of Selectmen Licensing Committee, for like, a what, a one, probably what, a one-day, each instance a one-day permit?
Yeah, I think the Board of Selectmen has started to look at that, too. I, I know it was on their agenda, and I did, I had to go back and watch it, but I know they're looking at that one-day licenses.
But my point is, that's like a constant feedback of how are things going?
It ties everything together nicely now, because they see and they know, and, you know, and you're right, the more often they do it, the more, every second what's going on here, yeah.
I think that's only fair to the neighbors. Okay, and then, we have a communication from the American, the Commission of Ability Assistance. Did you know, I thought this was actually pretty interesting, about the new senior center project, and some of the commission for ability assistance thoughts on that, and I think they make some good points, I just, how, I'm not sure how that necessarily, if it, there's anything we do on, 'cause we've already issued the special permit, but...
And so ADA compliance is just required in billing code, and so, making sure there's a button for the doors to open and whatnot will be in the plans. As far as the furniture piece, that's kind of separate from our contract with the architect and engineer, the town actually does the furniture and fixture, so we're certainly aware of this, and it's gone to the town manager, so we'll be sensitive to that when it comes time to actually purchase in those type items, but...
Okay, good. But I'm, I'm glad that people are looking at this and giving their expertise, you know, things that we, some of us may have expertise on, some may not, and I think it's glad, I'm glad we have this commission to be able to give this expertise.
We had a working group that started last October, and right up into the permitting timeframe, and the chairman of the Council on Aging was on that working group, I, there wasn't somebody from disabilities, but obviously they're following it, and it's totally appropriate, yeah, I'm glad they sent it.
Okay, I got a motion to approve the minutes for January 21st, 2020?
I have a question.
Question first.
In the minutes, we asked and agreed that there would be a presentation on raw water sample trends at the February 25th meeting. Are we on track for that?
I am working with, so I have a question. The, I'm working on that with the proper person, I was told that the water engineers would be appropriate to that, I just haven't heard back on that, but I, I was sent from DPW to the Water Treatment Center, so...
Okay, keep us updated on, and whether that's gonna, because it would be, if we are gonna talk about it on the 25th, it would be really nice to see some of that information ahead of time. If we're just gonna get it on the 25th, then I'd rather talk, or just before, I'd rather talk about it after I've had a chance to look at it.
Thank you.
Thank you, very much, Monica, okay.
Motion to approve the minutes. Second.
On favor, aye.
Motion to adjourn.
Second. On favor, aye.